This conference will now be recorded.
Right, yes ma'am. Councillors Olson, Sykes.
Yes.
Bessie Johnson.
Here.
Callum.
Here.
Alex Johnson.
Here.
And Coburn.
Here.
Five councillors present, your honour.
Okay, thank you. And then business from the public, we didn't have anybody that had contacted staff by, I believe it was by noon they needed to. And I'm not seeing anyone here would be online, that would be for business from the public. Okay, all right, so next our agenda item is sortie property access request. And Rick, hello.
You're muted, Rick.
Rick.
Okay, yeah. Our piece is pretty simple, really Kurt Sorty.
Hope I can hardly hear you, Rick.
Is that better now, Mayor?
Yeah, thank you.
Kurt Sorty has a piece of property, he has two pieces of property. One on the west side of the Caliponia River, which is in the county, and one on the east side, which is landlocked. He doesn't have access to it. What he's asking us to do is to grant him at least a promise that he could get a right-of-way through some city property that he has to go through, about 1,000 feet of city property, in order to build what's allowed on this property, which would be one house. And so, we're bringing that to you. We didn't feel that it was something that we as staff could okay or not okay. I don't think we have any real objections to it. He has quite a lot that he has, steps he has to go through to make that happen. And when we get done here, he's also somewhere where he could answer some questions if you had any questions as well.
I am present.
So what staff is looking for is some direction on what to do on this, whether to grant or not, and go from there.
Okay, Mike, you got a question?
Yeah, I read the paperwork and there's quite a lot of conditions that the city's put on it for him to be able to go forward and do this. And after reading the conditions, I really don't have a problem with saying go ahead as long as those conditions are in the city memo that was written are fulfilled.
Yeah, and staff doesn't really have a concern on that. It's going to be a chore to go through all the environmental and stuff and those pieces to do it, so he's got his work cut out for him on that regardless.
Bill and Bessie.
My question's for Sean. Can the city or anybody deny people or a person access to their property?
Can you hear me? I can't see me, but I can, I think you can. Hold on, I'm gonna flip my camera again.
There you go.
The question is, can we deny access to this property? And the answer is yes. I mean, at this point, that's, I mean, the properties, we can't deny him access necessarily to get to the property, to walk his property, but to deny access to use it as a road or something like that, I mean, at this point, that property is not considered buildable until he goes through a lot of, like, and there was a map that just said that, but Rick said that he has to go through a lot of hoops and stuff. So, I mean, if the city decided they didn't want to grant the access easement, they certainly are within their rights at this point to do so, but that's up to the council, so.
Well, I'm in favor of granting access. I'm surprised that the law would allow you to not, or the law would allow you to deny somebody access to their property. I like Mike.
Do we lose him?
Go ahead, go ahead Sean.
Oh no, I thought we lost you. I thought you were, I didn't hear the last thing you said.
Oh, I just said I'm surprised that the city could deny a person access to their property.
Well, first, another thing I think, Bill, is I don't, I'm looking at this map, I don't believe the only access is through city property, I mean, the only way to get to it is through city property. It looks like two ways of city property, but there may be other ways to get to that property than just through the city's property. But I don't, again, I don't know. I don't know this property to the jackdody, to the north of this property, or where it comes out, I can't see by looking at this map.
Okay.
But anyway, it's not.
So I was working with the councillor Olson, he's gonna join, sorry about that.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
But if the council doesn't have, well, if council has no issue with access, then we don't need to worry about it one way or the other, so.
I understand. Again, granting access, but I got a little different take on what Mike said. I agree with Mike that there's a lot of requirements. I feel that they seem quite excessive. And I was curious, Rick, are a lot of these requirements, state of Oregon requirements, like environmental and that type of thing?
Well, there's two different things. There's the six things that we're asking for from our point. One of them is we have a landlocked piece on the other side of the street, or other side of the river, that we would like to access occasionally for maintenance. So the six things on page two are the things that we are, the rest is all state, federal, all sorts of things like that. So it is, it's a chore. It would be a nice place for a house, but it is going to be a chore. And as far as the dotty coming in that direction, there's some waterways and stuff that make that really difficult for him.
Can I interrupt here?
Is that?
I don't mean to interrupt, I just wanted to let you know that I am present.
Okay, yeah, thank you. You don't have a video on?
I don't have a device like that. I still have a flip phone, so, no.
Those are simpler times.
Bessie?
Yeah, I don't, with all the requirements, I don't have a problem either, but on the map, I couldn't find, there was, it was not marked as far as I could tell where it exactly is that they want the access to. I mean, I see the outline of their property and I see that road, which one is it? Moose Run, I guess. So where is it actually that they need to go to and from?
Well, he'll go from, if you see the T, or we call it a hammerhead at the end of Moose Run.
Right.
He'll work, he'll go, he's got to work through, you know, wetlands thing, so we're not sure exactly where it would go. He would tend, he would swing over into the more field-looking area, and then I think his desire is to hit the property up close to Oak Creek. So it would run as close to the property line there as it could, and then swing into Oak Creek, or at.
So how, I mean, that would be quite a long easement, would it not be? I thought I read 1,000 feet, but, so would they go into the bear, the not-so-forested land and then connect on that one kind of a corner?
He's gonna have, he's gonna want it to be as short as he can.
Yeah.
But we, I guess, did some measuring, figured about 1,000 feet.
Really?
Somewhere in there that he's gonna have. He may be able to do it shorter. It's to his advantage to get in there quicker. Some of this property I don't think allows him to get it, he's gotta go for the higher ground, so he's gotta go a little farther.
Sure, yeah. Oh, okay, that helps. You know, if he can meet the requirements, I hope they're not too much to meet. I think it'd be good so that he could have a house or whatever he needs on it. Thank you.
Alex?
I feel the same way as my counterparts. I thought there's some of the requirements are kind of strict, but I do appreciate that he's willing to go through the requirements the city has, and state and federal. I don't see an issue with supporting this.
Okay, anyone else? Rich and us? Let's not, here, there's mine.
No, I'm good.
Well, I'll put it, I do sense, so I'm kind of opposite here. I remember when all this subdivision went in, so Kurt, I understand that you bought a piece of property and wanted, and I've missed two other people, the property owners. Sometimes when you buy a pig in a poach, you know, you know that it's sort of non-buildable and that's the way it is. But I do know this, we would have enough for council from this neighborhood. Just think about if they got access, then you're gonna have construction trucks coming in and out of there. And those property owners bought that, their property, knowing that there was access out of there. So that was a dead-end road, and it's probably one of the higher-valued homes that are in that last section on Moose Run for that whole development area. So I don't think it's fair for them when they bought that property, knowing that that was not buildable, that was beside.
Oh, okay, now it turned green. I didn't, I didn't.
Oh, okay. Hello, Dick.
Hey, thanks for calling.
Yep, we were worried about you, yes. So I do think, council, you will have to be prepared of having probably an uproar of that neighborhood through there. You know, for, you know, and then also, you never know in the future. Once you start getting access, somebody might want to come through and develop more, try to kind of somehow mitigate through to be able to make more units through there, and then that's gonna still put more of an impact through the existing neighborhood. So I'm just looking out, Kurt, for the existing neighborhood that was built out and not realizing that, you know, knowing that that was gonna be open space next to them. So I understand your dilemma, but that's a part of when you bought the property, it was not as buildable, so, yeah. Bessie?
Yes, I was gonna say, you know, the future, we would do like this. We'd take it on a case-by-case basis. If it works, it works, if it doesn't, it doesn't. So, you know, there's land there and if you can build a house on it, I'd say, good for him.
Okay, oh, Rich?
Yeah, I, well, I don't think that there are that many people that are going to worry about someone coming through while construction is going on. I mean, there is a difference between putting a business back there that you have vehicles going in and out of 30 times a day, and just somebody's house. Yes, there would be a bunch of traffic during construction, but of course, there was a bunch of traffic for the construction that happened at the last house, and the house just before that, and the house just before that. So if it happened all at the same time, you know, they all got it at the same time, but I don't see that as a big problem.
Okay, Bill's next. Also, I forgot to mention that it does set a precedent for our parkland if we start granting access, so be prepared for that, but, Bill?
I'll go ahead and make a motion that the city grant Mr. Sorty access to his property and work out agreement that's agreeable to both parties.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Dick, did you have any comments?
I'm wondering, what's the elevation of that property? Is it below 200 feet above sea level? Is it gonna go underwater when the river floods?
Pretty much open space, but Kurt, do you know?
I don't have an absolute accurate measurement of it. I've done GPS elevations over there quite a few different times, which I realize are not 100% accurate, but I've been told by quite a few different survey people that I've talked with, and they've said, you're, you know, you're within a foot or two. And in this area, when I built my house, the flood elevation is 208 and a half, which means you have to build it 209 and a half. I built it 210 and three-quarters. Over there, every time that I've gone over there and dropped my GPS on the ground, I come up with anywhere from 210 to 214. So it's actually, to the best of my knowledge, it's higher than where I'm at now.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Okay, Alex?
So, has anyone talked to the adjacent landowners or property owners about this potential change, and get their thoughts on it?
Are you asking me if I have?
I'm asking whoever, Rick.
Rick, you know? We have not. We were looking for direction from city council, but we have not reached out. It's gonna be, the concern that might come along is somebody on Moose Run. It's one more house, so I'm not sure that long-term it's gonna be a big deal, but maybe in construction.
So, councillor Callum was right, with construction, there's gonna be traffic, but it should taper off after construction's done, landscaping, all those things. I don't, I don't have a problem with it. I think it's a good idea for him, this property.
Okay, anything, we have a motion on the floor? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Okay, motion carried. All right, anything?
No, thank you.
All right, yep, thank you. Okay, next is the Columbus Street Infrastructure Funding Agreement. And Matthew, haven't seen, is he on? Oh, there you are.
I'm hiding in the corner.
Yeah, and actually, is, I don't see a video for Dick. Is anybody else? Dick, are you just on by phone?
No, I see you guys, I don't see, I don't see Bill.
Let me, oh, I bet you it's on the bottom here.
It is.
Okay.
It is.
It is, I see you now, so.
Well, am I too late to be on the screen?
No, I didn't scroll down when we got over, it shows 25, and then I had to scroll down to get past 25, so.
I don't see a picture, though.
I just scrolled off the screen. I think I scrolled myself out of the meeting.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, well, I lost, I lost the picture.
Oh, okay. All right, Matthew?
All right, so, good afternoon, everyone. So, bringing back, back in this year, we brought forward a proposal or a discussion regarding an infrastructure funding agreement for the Henshaw Farms project, which is located out on Columbus Street, southeast corner of town, 226 lot subdivision. One of the, one of the conditions that they had as part of the subdivision was to fully improve Columbus Street. That's, with that condition, it was proving to be pretty difficult for the developer to move financially forward with the project, along with all the other improvements that were required. So we looked at options to ease that, considering most of these, most, or three of the improvements that were required were TSDC funding eligible. So that included some right-of-way dedication along Columbus and Ellingson. Just due to the nature of the project and how it's phased out, they weren't gonna be able to take advantage of all of the TSDC credits that were out there, and actually gonna be leaving approximately, I think it was $900,000, right in that general range on the table that would be unutilized. So, part of this, the concept that we came up with, basic concept would be, the developer would fully improve Columbus Street. That's except, so curb gutter sidewalks, except for on the east side, they wouldn't do the sidewalks on that side. At the time that the construction of Columbus was accepted, this is how the agreement's been structured, accepted by the city, the city would then write them a check, or we'd have it in an escrow account, release that escrow for $500,000 of, excuse me, of TSDI, TSDCI funds, that would be released to them to help kind of offset those costs. Now, as far as, in exchange for that $500,000 contribution, the developer would waive their right to a capital recovery agreement for the street-related improvements on the east side of the street. So when the east side develops, normally they would pay a connection fee. That connection fee would, if a capital recovery agreement was entered into, that connection fee would go back to that developer if it was within the allotted 20-year window that we have. In this case, if we enter into this agreement, they would waive that right, so any connection fees collected would actually come back into the city. So, here, because we've got the infrastructure funding agreement kind of put together, reviewed by our city attorney staff here internally, as well as their group, to a point, I think, that we've got something that everybody's agreeable to. So we're brought back to council to get direction on which way to go with it, and answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, questions? Yeah, Rich?
Do the total of all the fees that are, we're going to levy on all the remaining lots that are going to be developed on the west side first, cover all the expenses that we're going to incur?
Not sure if I understand the question, but.
Well, they're gonna pay SDCs for, for street, school, parks, yada, yada, yada. When you add all that up, is that going to fill the need for the amount of money we have to spend to do the project? The city has to expand. Or are we going to dip into reserve of some sort someplace in order to get that money to finish the project?
So the funding itself, so the $500,000 that is discussed in here, it actually comes from the TSDCI fund, which is, is collected TSDI, TSDCI funds that the city receives and can be used for capacity-expanding improvements. This would be one of them, and as Ron, and he could jump in whenever he wants, but as Ron indicated, and I think in our proposal back in January, was, it's kind of exactly what this money was intended for, is for projects like this. You know, the downside is, we've got plenty of money in there, as if there were other program, programmed projects that, you know, we're just, we're taking $500,000 now and using it at this project. So as far as, you know, the development of lots on the west side, if they're gonna cover our expenses, you know, that's, they, any of the developments on the west side will still be collecting new SDCs, except for on the, well, reimbursement portion, we will be, but on the I, they'll have a credit available based on all the improvements they're having to build. If that makes sense.
Well, that's, I understand, that's what the situation is. The only question is, the amount of SDCI money that they're gonna spend, that goes back into that account, is that going to cover the $500,000? So it is revenue neutral?
I'm gonna let Ron come up and chat.
The short answer, if you look at this development by itself, the short answer is no, which is really the reason we're here. They will pull, you know, based on, they have three or four SDC-eligible improvements they're gonna build with a subdivision. The total amount of credit they'll get, based on construction of those four improvements, exceeds the amount of SDC fee they will owe when building permits are pulled, by about $900,000. That's the problem, that they have a lot more improvements relative to the number of units and credits they can pull. In most developments, what you'll see is the exact opposite. Somebody will, will build an SDC-eligible improvement. We will, for the first batch of building permits, forego SDC fees until they've pulled enough permits, till it balances out, then we'll start collecting fees again. In this case, they would pull all of their building permits and leave $900,000 on the table, because of the number of SDC improvements tied to this project. So if you look at this project in isolation, the answer is no, it won't, it won't break even. That's one of the things we highlighted, we brought it to the work session a couple of months ago, several months ago, January. The reason we suggested council might want to consider doing this is, one, you know, the amount of money being left on the table here, it's essentially based on what the exaction was, you know, the, how big of a difference there is between what they pay and what we can offer as credit. And the fact that this project, out of on the corner of the South Albany Area Plan property, that if this project can't go, then the utilities don't get started across Oak Creek and headed south, and none of the other projects, you know, past this project can happen. So this is kind of a keystone project for starting it off, and if infrastructure would prohibit, not this development, but any development on this site, based on cost, it would never get started in South Albany.
Okay, thank you.
Bessie? Well, you didn't have anything? Anyone else? So I, for some reason, I got Bessie now on two screens and Rich on two screens. So Matthew, what about our, are they still paying into the SDCRs, reimbursements?
Correct. When they do their, building any of their new homes, anything like that out there, they are still paying the SDCR component for transportation, and they will have SDCs for sewer and for water, just like any other subdivision out there.
How much are SDCs now for schools? Did they ever increase it when they implemented it a decade ago?
Yeah, there currently aren't SDCs for schools. There's a construction excise tax that the city does collect on behalf of gaps, that runs at right about a dollar per square foot.
So they never have increased, well, the state legislature set a cap on it, but, yeah, years back. Okay, Bill?
I'm just curious if anybody saw this coming. You know, we spent a lot of time on this South Albany plan in many meetings and so forth and so on, and it sounds like before we can even get it off the ground, we've got a huge problem. If I read between the lines of what Rich was saying, is a little concerned about helping a contractor or developer build their project. In other words, it ought to stand on its own. But what Matthew's saying, if we don't help them, nothing's gonna happen, unless the price of houses go up and the demand goes up, and finally, the thing does pencil out. So I guess, back to my original question, is this a hiccup that planning did not anticipate or could not foresee?
It's a bit of a special case, you know, the things that make this one more problematic than some of the developments that follow. This one was subject to an annexation agreement, and that annexation agreement required them to build not a partial street improvement on Columbus, but basically the whole street, so both sides. So that added to the initial expense of the development. This development has frontage on two arterial streets, so the other projects in this area aren't gonna have that problem. This one has frontage on both Columbus and Ellingson. This one has frontage on both Columbus and Ellingson. This one also is bisected in the middle by the Oak Creek Parkway, which the South Albany area plan said. Half of the north side of that street had to remain open. So that limited to the number of lots that can happen here. So the combination of all of those things make this lot particularly impacted by the improvements in the South Albany area plan. The other properties in the South Albany area plan won't see that kind of impact. They won't have all, they won't have all of these different factors.
So were they, I remember when we did the South Albany area plan, we really were kind of pushing instead of traffic signal as roundabouts. So did that ever get put into the, to the agreement here for the land use decision? Is it traffic signal or just, or roundabouts?
The South Albany area plan envisions a roundabout at the intersection of Columbus and Ellingson. One of the, this particular subdivision includes the corner where that roundabout is, but that property was part of the subdivision. So it's, if it's been left as a, a large parcel, it will have a future land use action for some of multifamily and commercial. So what, what this project is doing as part of its subdivision is dedicating the right of way for the roundabout. But they weren't required to construct any of it because they're not contiguous to it. The part of the property contiguous to it will be a future development application.
Oh, okay. So, so if they build this out, the 229 lots, what's going to go? And Columbus before build out, anything?
Oh, and Ellingson, you broke up a little bit there, Mayor, the, so at Ellingson and Columbus is, is, I think the question was, is anything going to go in there for now?
Build out? To handle the extra traffic?
Nothing would go in with this 220 lot subdivision, all that would happen at the intersection is the dedication of right of way.
Okay, that's too bad. I think, if I remember right, I don't think this application ever came. I guess it did come to the council for the land use part to it, or I can't remember if it did or not, but. Okay, Mike?
Yeah, the question I have is, is 229 homes with the improvement there, what is going to be, long term? Isn't the city going to be collecting taxes on these homes for a long term? And going to the general fund or something like that? Sounds to me that over a period of time. It'd be a, an increase in the money to the city, am I right or wrong?
It's, it's an increase, Mike, but if you look at the past, I've never seen it in all my years. More housing puts more demand on services, so you're going to just end up increasing services. And as you can tell, we can barely even keep our head above water. So it growth does not pay for itself, puts you more in the hole. So if I'm wrong, prove me wrong, please. So I've never seen it.
Well, then we should stop growth and we should stop having, letting people have kids. And go do what China did, limit every family to one, to one baby and we won't have the growth anymore, right?
It's the migration into Oregon, that's where the population is coming from, it's moving to Oregon.
Making the dictator will do it.
Bill?
I'm not opposed to the growth, but I'm opposed to the city. In essence, financing it or it like riches, if we're not even going to cover all of our money. You know, we were just talking about the sortie property and the impact of the neighborhood and, you know, it's one house if, if they build it, and that's a big if. You know, compared to what we're talking about out here. And if people start complaining and then find out that the city's throwing a bunch of money in behind it. I mean, I don't think this is the council's pet project that, you know, we're all just chomping at the bit to see, to get going. I, I, I'm not opposed to it, but quite honestly, the, the developer ought to figure out a way to, to build it and pencil it out or, or else. Not do it.
Rich?
I guess the bottom line for me is it's going to all pencil out at the end of the whole deal. And while we're going to be footing the bill for a while. This is putting a bunch of improvements on a street for everybody that a small group of people get. That, that a small group of people get to pay for to begin with. And that small group of people is the reason why there's a problem. And if you're, if you're having to build out Colum, Columbus across, across Oak Creek. And go through all that. That is helping not just the Henshaw properties, but all of the rest of it at the same time. I don't have a problem with the idea that at the end of the whole thing, everything pays for itself. And if that, you know, I, I just don't want to make sure, I just want to make sure that we do not. End up with a hole like we did at the Brandis property. Where we took funds that were designated for something else. And put them in place so the thing could go ahead and then we ended up having to take property at that point. When, you know, the economy fell on its toes. I guess I don't see that happening here. Because this is kind of the, the step that you have to get to, to get across Oak Creek. So I guess I don't have the heartburn, I just want to make sure. Long term, it's covered. And so for that reason, I, I'm in favor of it.
Bessie, Bill?
Yeah. I'm kind of going along with what Rich said. If it only benefits this development, then that's a question, I mean. But that's why we did the South Albany plan is so that we could, you know, develop it out there. But if there's some way that it's going to actually enhance the area and help others to, you know. Do maybe more developing or at least so that it just doesn't enhance the one little subdivision of 229 lots. I mean, I'm for it, but I want to make sure that it's not just for one little area and that it would actually contribute to. Maybe Rich, Rich, Ron, Ron Rich, no, sorry. Maybe you could kind of, you know, say something on that where if, if we complete the road farther, if it is, will it benefit others? Thanks.
I, I, I think it would. The, it's not just the road improvements that'll happen if the subdivision goes forward, it's extensions of water and sewer main as well. It'll allow us to loop some large diameter water mains. And so it, 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 it's kind of the first step in getting incremental residential development heading from this property west along Ellingson. But the utility infrastructure, particularly the water loop, could also be critical for the future development of the industrial parcels over by 99 and Buell Pepsi property. And so if, if this site doesn't develop and an industrial user comes along with high demand and we're forced, the city. To do that water main loop, we're doing it all on our, our bill, our dime, there's nobody else paying for a share of it. The way the SDC fees for streets are worked, are set up for arterial roads like Columbus and Ellingson. Those fees aren't intended to pay for the whole road, they're intended to pay for the oversizing cost. We're only having eligible 25% of the cost of those roads. So we're paying for the oversight component, the, the, the problem here is that the oversized component is so big that they can't, they can't. It all with the credits they have. To Rich's concern about what happened to us, you know, out, out, off of Timber Ridge by the school, that, that really not a risk here. And that we're not going to spend a dime of that 500,000 until the road improvements are done and the infrastructure is in. So they have to perform before any of, any of the city's money goes out. In the long run, it could be quite a long run. Some of that 500,000 would come back to the city in the, in form of road connection fees when the property on the east side of Columbus develops. And those fees were estimated to be on the order of 350,000. So it wouldn't completely close the gap, but it would come closer to closing the gap. And if, if this development had not had 229 lots, but if it had had 600 lots. They would have taken full advantage of those SDC fees and we wouldn't have seen any of that come in. Right, they would have still built the improvements. So the problem here, you know, basically is they don't have enough lots relative to the improvements they have to build.
Bill?
Well, going back to Rich's first question that he had with Matthew and correct me if I'm wrong. I thought Matthew said, we're not going to break even on those deals. But Rich was saying that once everything is built out, we get our money back. I didn't, I didn't hear that.
Well, I, I think the, what, what Ron actually just even kind of reiterated, so that for the 500,000 that the city would contribute towards this. The developer would waive their right for this capital recovery agreement. That's where the connection fee piece is collected. So the properties on the east side, as Ron just indicated. We anticipate to collect approximately $350,000 in connection fees for the properties on the east side of Columbus. That would be benefiting from, from these improvements as well. So those, those collected connection fees normally, in a normal situation where a capital recovery agreement was entered upon. Those would go back to the developer. In this case, in exchange for the 500,000, our, kind of our way to recoup that is. They don't get the opportunity or they waive their, their right to enter into a capital recovery agreement. When those connection fees are collected, they now come back to the city instead of going to the developer. So as Ron said, you're not completely recouping it dollar wise, but you're getting pretty close. You know, there's obviously other advantages to the city of, of having these improvements built. As, as Ron indicated, not just the street portions of it that, that everybody will get to take advantage of, but also the, the utility extensions that come with it.
Alex?
I'm just still dealing with the coming out in the hole on this. Rich brought up a very good point, I, I like the development, I think. It makes sense to grow out there, but like you said, it takes a while, we may didn't grow at a rate where it can support this community. And my, so another safety question I have is Ellison Road in Columbus, you said a roundabout's going to go there?
Ultimately, yes.
So I drive that all the time, 911 or something, and people are coming through from the highway from 34, they're doing 60, 70 miles per hour. Is a roundabout feasible for there?
It will slow down.
My, my base concern is, is accidents there. We have high school kids, we have people coming from West Albany High School driving over. I just, I just, a roundabout there scares me, it really does. A light for me would be more safe, you know, than, than, because it would, it would slow the flow of people coming in and out of the development. But a roundabout there frightens me because people, we're not, Albany is not accustomed to having roundabouts like Bend. So the education around driving, I just think that a roundabout there would be unsafe, especially when you add the other community that's going to develop on the east side. And people coming off 55, not I-5, excuse me, 34. I mean, I, I pulled out there and people coming through there 60 miles per hour. So that's increased policing out there, because that would be city land then, right? So it'd be increased policing by city patrol officers. I just, I don't think a roundabout would be good there. I support the growth, I support the, but my concern is safety. We've got a bunch of high school kids learning to drive and out there, it's going to take longer for an ambulance to get there, it's going to be. I just think we should rethink that.
Other questions?
I don't think I show up, but I do have a question.
Okay, Dick, yep?
I guess, I guess you don't hear me either.
No, we hear, just can't see you, so I don't know if you put up a pin or anything, there's no video.
Well, I see myself now. Anyway, my, my question is, don't most subdivisions pay in a little bit more than they need? And doesn't it all balance out in the long run? This one doesn't pay quite enough to balance out, but some pay a little bit more.
That's, that's true, you know, the SDC fee is set up to balance out at the end of its horizon year. And this, this, you know, if the city chooses to spend SDC money on an SDC eligible project, that would not change. That's what that money is targeted at, it's targeted at basically the oversized components of a specific set of improvements. But that 500,000 would be buying you with some of those improvements IDed in the TSP.
So then we don't need to worry that this one doesn't quite pay its own way, because overall the system balances.
Counselor Olson, this is, this is Jeff, it, it does, it does balance and I wanted to, kind of tags on to response to Counselor Johnson's comment. I don't know that, I would characterize it as going in the, going in the hole on this. So you're, you're just choosing to spend your SDC funds on this project, no different than choosing to spend your SDC funds on any other eligible project that you might do in the CIP. You're just agreeing to do it at this point in time. You set your SDC fee based on a defined project list. So you're collecting the amount of fees over time from all of the people connecting in order to construct all of those projects. This project is on your list, so you are in theory spreading that cost around to all of the customers that are going to be, or residents that are going to be connecting in the future. And reimbursing yourself over time in that way. You're just choosing to build this one now instead of a different project that's on your list. But to be clear, you, you don't, you have a, you have a strong reserve and you're not postponing any other planned projects in order to construct this one.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right, our staff, what are you needing from the council then?
So we're, we're at the step where we've got the, the funding agreement ready to go. And we're, we're looking for a direction from council to either authorize or not. Staff to basically enter into the agreement.
Okay, do you want a motion? To make it plain, counsel, would you like to make a motion to direct staff?
I'd make a motion to direct staff to enter into an agreement for this particular project.
A second.
Okay, motion's been made in a second, any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried. All right, anything else, Matthew?
That should do it, thank you very much, everyone.
Okay, thank you. Next, Seth, you have the TLT funding discussion. Is Seth on or not?
It's, that's going to be Jorge who takes the lead on this.
All right.
Mayor, Counsel, good afternoon. I'm going to try to start by sharing, I'm going to be sharing a couple of things here, a few things. He doesn't want to share. That's interesting.
An IT guy can't find the share.
He doesn't want to share it now.
It's because he's got a thousand other knobs and buttons he's left.
Him having that problem.
Well, Bessie appeared, I don't see any share.
We still, I still don't see you, Dick.
Jorge, you should be a presenter as well.
Yeah, I'm trying to, and it says open preferences, future control.
It's usually towards the bottom, Dick, if you kind of highlight or maybe if you're on the IP. It's usually towards the bottom, Dick, if you kind of highlight, or maybe if you're on the iPad, towards the top. And then you hit camera.
I hit it. And then a picture of myself, then I show up. So share my webcam.
Yeah, go ahead and share your webcam there. There you go. So I'm going to pause for a second here and try to email Matt some stuff so he can share it for me. Hold on a second. I don't know why this machine is not doing it.
Share will be nice when we can start meeting in person instead of going through this rodeo.
Amen to that.
Yeah, hold on a second. I'll do this real quick here. Email. So man, I'm gonna go and share a couple of things with you.
We could have council meetings in chamber, just call it a peaceful protest, and then nothing will happen.
Matt, check to see if you have two files.
Yeah, which one do you want first?
Let's go with the Word document, and then we'll open up the other one.
Oh, I think you sent me.
Oh.
You sent me the temp file, not the actual file.
Okay, hold on a second.
Hey, Rich, you sing. Why don't you sing us a song while we wait, you know, break up this dead air?
Oh, I don't know. When I went out walking on Kilgary Mountain, oh, that's enough.
There you go.
Yeah.
How about, how about I found my thrill on Blueberry Hill?
But I didn't find my thrill on Blueberry Hill. Okay, almost there. I am very happy to see the IT people having IT problems.
I know.
That's all Jorge, so.
I just went through my printer.
Oh, me too. Microsoft updated the computer, and now I lost my printer. And then I spent eight hours one day, I think a week ago Friday, trying to fix it. And I looked and then kind of with the Microsoft help, and then it says, oh, we did an upgrade, and some printers do not work. We're trying to fix it. I'm still waiting. Is that what yours, Rich?
Well, mine was, mine was, it first told me I was out of ink, and so I replaced the ink cartridge. Oops, I didn't have all of them, so I had to go down and buy some. Got back, replaced it, and then it said, oh, my God, I'm dead. You know, Matt, you didn't go in and sit there for 300 hours.
Yeah, I know. No, mine will skip, and it'll make copies, but I cannot print anything. So I'm going to have to get a new print. I was hoping I they would update and get it fixed, but this has been over a week with no printer.
It's cheaper to get a printer than to get the ink.
Oh, I know. But I don't like to learn a new printer. This has been a good old one.
Oh, I hear you there.
I apologize for the delay.
Do you see it?
Yes, yeah, we can see it. Yeah, you can't see it, but I can.
Printers.
So earlier today, the TLT committee met, and they approved two motions. The first one is, and then I'll go into detail of what that looks like. Matt, yeah. So the first one is that, yeah, the TLT is recommending that to the city council that the materials and services be cut by 90%, wages and salaries for the economic development staff be cut by 50%. Both Monty Monty House line item, which includes a docent line item in the capital projects line item, be cut down to zero. The trolley line item, cut to zero. Amadek, cut to zero. Albany Airport, cut to zero. Police and fire support for events, cut to zero. As well as the main street line item be combined with the other funds, and instead of being on a reimbursement basis, to be funded like we fund the other items. So that's the first motion. And let's go back a little bit down here.
Go on.
Yeah, let's go to the second motion, and then I'll go back to the spreadsheet so you can see the council, see what the recommendation implementation looks like. The second motion approved by the TLT committee earlier today is to recommend to the city council that the AVA and ADA continue to be funded at any additional funds that come in that we haven't forecasted in the budget that I'm going to be presenting to you. Any additional funding that comes in beyond that be allocated to both AVA and ADA until those two line items reach the original budget amount of the first half of the biennium. And I'll show you what those numbers look like. So these are the two recommendations, motions that were approved by the TLT committee and wanted us to share with you, city council. Let's go back to the spreadsheet, Matt, please.
Okay, I gotta drag it to the right screen here.
Yeah, go back to the first tab.
Okay, just making it big enough here. First tab?
Yeah. Can you expand that little bit here? I can see it. Sorry to put Matt on the spot here. I had it already. It's just didn't want to share. Okay, so this is the spreadsheet budget, balanced budget that we presented the city council on June 10. And this is the one that the TLT committee started to work on today. As you can see, we presented to you a balanced budget, and that was taking $193,000 deficit that we had on the first year and moving that to the second year, and then expected revenues were 424, which left us with 230,000 available to fund all the line items that are within the economic development program that includes tourism and economic development. Can you please click on the second tab?
Yep.
So the second tab is the information on the recommendation that we just read as a motion. If you can see on those dark blue boxes, that's the implementation of that first motion, which recommends the city council to cut city staff, economic development city staff by 50%. Materials and services line item by 90%. Amadek by 100%. And the rest of the line items in the tourism-related activities down to 100% except ADA and AVA. And that would render a $40,000, $40,000, $40,980 available to distribute back. Can you scroll down, Matt, a little bit? So by redistributing those dollars, basically what I did was I looked at the ratio of how many, how many dollars were received by the AVA versus the ADA? And it seems like it's 80/20 ratio. So I took 80% of those $40,000 and applied it to AVA. And you can see there's their budget went up on this recommendation to 148,000. And the ADA, the Main Street program went up to $18,000, and the Downtown Association went up to 17,988. So that's the recommendation from the TLT. If you don't have any other, if you have questions, I'll stop there because they don't present what staff took these recommendations and and modified it a little bit to provide you a second option. But this is basically what the TLT committee recommended for the council to to consider from their perspective. Any question before I go to the other spreadsheet?
Any question?
Well, Jorge, this is Bessie. I just wanted to ask, for wages and salaries for city staff, what does, I mean, I didn't think that we had city staff associated with them. I'm just clarification.
Yeah, so basically, Councilor Johnson, 25% of Sophie and Seth's salary are funded through the TLT dollars to come in, the tax, TLT taxes to come in.
Oh.
And this is to support economic development activity. So they are basically funded 75% Cara, 25% economic development activity. So by reducing these dollars, you're reducing the capacity in terms of economic development activities that are both Seth and Sophie can take on.
I see. Okay, thanks.
Okay.
So, so, okay, Councilor Johnson. Is there any way that we, is there money left in the economic opportunities fund? Economic opportunities fund that can be allocated for ADA and AVA and some of these other activities? And what's left in it? And is it, and has that money been allocated for other projects?
My understanding is that the economic opportunity.
Jorge, if I may, Councilor Johnson, can we just, if you don't mind, can we let Jorge go through the end of his presentation? And then you'll be able to ask those questions with a little bit more context.
Okay, I'll do that. Thank you.
And we'll go back to that one. Okay, so I wanted to, there's a line item here that is materials and services that is recommended by the TLT committee to be cut by 90%. I wanted to show you what that, what is in there and why some of these cuts may not be feasible. Can you please click on M and S there? So this is for the Economic Development Fund, the items that we have within materials and services. So we budgeted for the second half of the biennium, 91,900. And you can see the first column that says 2020 revised budget. That's how much we budgeted for this, for this program. And then on the 2021 actual is what we are, what we recommended city council as part of the reductions. As you can see, the first line item, insurances and bonds, that's something that we have to pay. That's part of the charges that we get for from for us here in one of our programs. We reduced application of faxes from 1800 to 100, reduced materials and supplies from 1600 to 150. Memberships and due, Seth is the president of one of the state's economic development consortium or association. And he pays dues into that. So we're reducing just to the bare minimum, which is 800, about $800, $820 that we'll need to pay for that. And then comes central services. So central services, each program, each budget program that we have in the city contributes to central services. And that funds, for example, finance, HR, city manager's office, the building here in City Hall for rent, you know, the different activities that just paid rent, electricity and other items that are covered by that. By cutting down this line item, as we are recommending here, there's going to be a deficit on those other programs that I just mentioned that will have to, you know, recover or this or have to get some additional dollars to cover for that. That brings it down to the 27,570. This is the 70% cut that we recommended. The one that the TLT committee presented is a 90% cut. If the council wants to go in that direction, we'll have to revise these numbers to make, to match that, which which will, you know, we'll go over after we're done here. So I just wanted to give you a view of what the materials and services line item has inside and what cuts we made to those. Matt, can you please go to the next tab, the one that has an A? Thank you. So this is the recommendation that we are providing the council from, from the information we got from the TLT committee. You saw their recommendation. And this is the recommendation we are proposing to the, to the council. The first one is to keep the wages and salary to, for the economic development staff at the 45% reduction instead of the 50% reduction. And also maintain the materials and services of that number that I just showed you a few minutes ago, which is the 27,570. That's a 70% cut to that line item. One of the things I wanted to remind the council is that one of your themes in the strategic plan is healthy economy, and there's economic development activities that are funded and managed by the economic development staff that will deviate from your strategic plan if you choose to not fund the economic development activities as we are proposing. And then we take all the other items that are in dark blue and that say zero, 100% cut. All those dollars will equate to about $19,000. And those $19,000 we're proposing to put back into between ADA and AVA, which will raise 80% will go to AVA, and 20% will be distributed among ADA for the two programs. And that will render a balanced budget. But this is just staff's recommendation and how to achieve, based on recommendation from the TLT, but also giving you some additional information on the impact on cuts to the economic development activity items.
Okay, I see. Rich has a question. And for your information, my laptop said there's an error, and I lost that video. I'm trying to get back on. So, Rich?
Okay, Veterans Day Parade, zero. Can you, can you explain the what that means in real terms for the Veterans Day Parade?
I can probably speak on that part, but it's, there's not, you'll be probably hearing a decision on that, and we'll leave that up to the organizers of the Veterans Day Parade.
That was my question.
Yeah, Councilor, yeah, there's a.
If we take the money away from it, what does that do to the Veterans Day Parade?
That was a decision that the commission made this morning when we advised them that there was a very strong possibility that the parade wasn't going to happen. So it's still based on a, on a percentage chance, but a very high percentage chance that the parade won't happen.
Over $3,000?
No, 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 no. This for, for other reasons, including the.
It's many other reasons, so it's not out public yet. Any other question?
It was not a, that was not a case of the $3,000 cut causing the cancellation at all.
Any other questions? I only have four councils on the screen. I don't have Alex or Dick, so just speak up if you got a.
So can I ask the question about, is there any other place where we could bring funds from for both of those activities? And some of the ones that we're proposing to cut, like, what's in the economic opportunity? Is this the right time, Peter?
It is, but I would, I would caution you that one of the ways that we've gotten into our, first of all, Jorge says often that this is the harbinger of things to come, that this is a small picture of what's going to happen next year when we try to create a budget. So what we've done in the past is we've taken one-time monies from places and use them to plug holes. And that's not a good practice to get into.
But my, my thing was, if we can just do it for one year, and then they could pay it back when TLT money does increase, is that something that's possible?
Well, anything is.
Yeah.
Possible, but I, you know, again, I don't know what the we can't tell, what we're trying to do is budget conservatively here and estimate conservatively. So what you're proposing would depend on the picture getting much rosier. And, you know, while I'm an optimist, just like you and anybody else is, you know, that's, that's something you have to ask yourself. Do you want to, do you want to bet on that?
You know, I, I think it is a policy decision for the council whether they wanted to use those funds. I mean, I think if we, if we took 100,000 out of it and, you know, 75% went to AVA, 5% to Downtown Association, I think we would, we, we would get our money back out of it through TLT. And what we could do is have it down for borrowing those funds, just like we do for when it comes to equipment replacement fund is when we borrow from it, is the program pay it back. So we could have when things turn around and more revenues, that would be one of the first things is have it down to pay back those funds. So it would be sort of on a, you know, a loan type basis for we get that the, you know, full speed in our tourism. So that'd be an option. Bessie?
Yeah, I was wondering, I know there's not a lot of employees in. Yeah, I was wondering, I know there's not a lot of employees involved and everything, but I just wondered, are the two, if we're going to take money from everything else and then put it to the AVA and ADA? I mean, are, are people being furloughed like every other business or anything? Is that a possibility to cut costs for a little while? Or is it just not even feasible?
For the, you're talking, Bessie?
Yeah, the ADA and the ADA, both.
I think they're having to majorly cut back with these funds. It's barely keeps the doors open. Peter?
Yes, they, they are making major cuts and they've already started doing that in anticipation of the reductions that they'll be facing.
I'm sorry, does that mean personnel cuts or just material and services?
No, they roll back hours for each of their employees. Absolutely.
Talking two different things, folks.
Right.
She was talking about, she was talking about our staff. And you're talking about AVA, ADA staff.
Oh, yes.
And Bessie?
In terms of our, oh, go ahead, but Counselor Johnson, you, were you talking about our staff, hey, staff?
No, I, I was, I'm, I agree with Rich. I'm, I'm like, so with Rich. What I'm saying is, is that if we can set it up to where we pull some money from the hundred thousand, Mayor Covino, Mayor Covino put that number out there, I'm just using the same one. Pull a hundred thousand dollars out there and, and set those two up, those organizations up. Because as we start to improve, things start to, we're going to need those people to attract people to come to our city. And so if we cut them to the point where we cannot recover fast enough, then that curve is going to be longer for us to grow the city's, you know, tourism. But if we keep them at least somewhat, I want to say somewhat more hold than, than they currently are, at least when it's time to ramp back up and everything opens up, we'll be ahead of, we'll be ahead of other cities. And I, I think that, I think it's a few, a few hundred, a thousand, a hundred thousand dollars. I think there'll be a long way to keeping us ahead of the game. We don't, we don't want to open up and then have nothing to bring people here. So my, my concern is, is that if it's something we can entertain, I'd greatly appreciate that. Go ahead.
Peter?
I, I just, just wanted to point out that, you know, this, this, this budget has tourism receiving seventy-seven percent of available dollars. And whether you think the requirement is fifty-three percent or seventy percent or somewhere in between, it's well over that. And, and tourism as a component of our local economy is a small part. So when you're talking about spending money on economic development, if we take our spending on AMDEC down to zero, we have no more representation in economic development regionally. And it makes our economic development staff all the more important for sectors of the economy that go far beyond tourism. And I certainly want tourism to, to recover and rebound. But you can't forget about all the other parts of the economy, which is what the, this budget helps to fund and what the staff help to promote.
Peter, this is Bessie. Thank you for that. That's kind of my thought too.
Rich?
Yep. The amount of TLT we get is largely dependent on how good the economy is. We looked at this for years. And when the economy is growing, we get more money. And when the economy goes down, we get less money. Now, what we do to encourage people to come here helps. That's true. However, but the big deal is how good the economy is, especially with the, the hotels that are out next to the freeway. They come because of interest. Yeah, they also come because of who's coming off the freeway. In the past, ADA has said that there is, look, we're getting more TLT, therefore our job is being done better. And tried to make that correlation. At that point, I tried to say, wait a minute, that's not necessarily it. Now it's gone the other direction. And, you know, it's COVID nineteen that's, that's causing the problem. I mean, we're dealing with something, what's coming up is going to be painful. This is just the beginning. For us to now dip into our budget to take care of stuff, well, so what happens if, if ADA doesn't, doesn't take care of the parking as well as they're doing now? What happens is people park wrong. I mean, it's not earth shattering. Now, it's annoying. It's a whole lot of stuff. What's, you know, and we're going to be stuck with the weighing real people that are being harmed at ADA and ADA, et cetera, with real people who are being harmed on our staff. That's the choice we have. And it's an awful choice. It's the one we have to deal with.
So, I mean, I really, I mean, I think what we could have to have kind of a good resolution to this would end up being to borrow off the hundred thousand off the Economic Opportunity Fund. And maybe then look at taking materials and services and have it paid for out of Cara funds. And that would end up helping out on the staffing side to the TLT funds. That is, this is another option that would be able to get us through this year and not be such a detriment to our tourism industry.
Mayor, Cara is not legal. We can't take Cara funds and do city stuff with it.
You can.
You have to be very, you have to be very careful. When we start talking about, let's use Cara money, it has to be done for Cara only. Because there are folks in the neighborhoods that would like to see us have a stumbling block where Cara is concerned. The more we don't worry about keeping Cara era completely separate from city, the, the easier it would be for them to stand up and say, excuse me, if there's no difference and it's illegal for, for Cara to borrow money, we have to be very careful here.
We, pretty much it is kind of a formula though, when it comes to allocating for that material and services. So it is, there is some room for tweaking of that, but, or take out more out of the, you know, Economic Opportunity Fund than to be able to keep the staffing piece whole and to be able to increase up a hundred thousand between the two tourism agents.
Maybe this is Jorge. Just wanted to go back to the comment or the question that Counselor Johnson obviously had. The, this reduction will significantly affect our staff and there is a potential for furloughing our economic development staff at some, at some level. My concern here is that we have two incredible talented economic development staff members. And we're not guarantee they will stay around if we're cutting their salaries this much.
Are you talking, excuse me, are you talking to Counselor Johnson the second or Counselor Johnson, Bessie?
No, Bessie Johnson. No, and then, I guess he asked the question about the staff. Yeah, I just kind of lost my, my, my comments here. But the other piece was that Economic Development Opportunity Fund is a one-time, you know, money that we have. And then the council might, I have to provide this perspective. The council might need to use this later when we're dealing with the regular city budget. And this might be, you know, it seems like a good short-term solution proposed, but it might not be as good when you start dealing with the regular budget and when we come starting, starting here in the, in the spring. So the other piece that I wanted to talk about in terms of wages and salaries is that the city is self-insured for unemployment. So when we're cutting their salaries by certain percentage, and if they apply for unemployment, sixty-three percent of those dollars that they get from unemployment, we, the city, from these line items have to provide back to fund those items. So it's not a, a, a complete reduction as we're talking here, because there has to be some dollars that come back if they apply for unemployment benefit or if they stay with us.
Jorge, this is Bessie, and I, I just want, I mean, I don't want to cut Sophie or Seth at all. We need them. We want to keep them around. I, you know, everybody is suffering right now. And if, you know, AVA and ADA have to cut back for a little while, I think so be it. But we don't want to lose Sophie and Seth. That's my opinion.
Yeah, the other piece that I was going to mention was that the, during the pandemic that we're still in, Sophie and Seth did an incredible job of helping our local businesses go through this process. And not having these folks available to us kind of goes against the economic development and other opportunities that might come for the city.
Peter?
I agree.
Yeah, I don't want to sound cold-hearted, but it's not about Sophie and Seth. It's about the programs and the missions of the city. But I will point out that Marilyn is retiring here. We're not replacing her. Allison Leece has left for another job. We're not replacing her. We're going to try to get some of this work done by Jorge and some of it done by Holly. Some of it I will do, some of it Matt Harrington will do. But some of it has to do with urban renewal, some of it has to do with economic development. And we're also not subscribing to AMDEC anymore. So it would be a very unwise time to reduce economic development staff when we're trying to make sure that the Wells Fargo project goes off well. We're trying to make sure that St. Francis has a good chance of succeeding. We're trying to make sure Water Avenue. A lot of these are, as, as you all know, Cara projects, but there is a crossover and there is, there is effort that's spent in both areas and sometimes they overlap. So now that's a, that's just a question of looking at, you know, reducing staff. The question of the one hundred thousand dollars to, to Backfield, that's a different question. And I think those two have to be kept separate in your mind.
Okay, are there questions? So, Dick?
Well, this is best again. I just want to say, you know, no matter where you take the money from.
I'd say four ones out of the picture, Mike.
Matt, can you unchair?
Oh, yeah. Let's see. Maybe.
So my original, my, my original question was never answered. I asked about how much was in the Economic Opportunity Fund?
The answer to that, I believe there is about between one point eight and two million dollars that are in the Economic Development Opportunity Fund.
Which could end up being just an industry coming around and wanting to take it for a grant. So, I mean, this is something that does promote, you know, for more revenue sources to come in, but.
So do we have money coming in from the money that we already got loaned out from that fund?
No. Some.
It's, it's accounts receivable, certainly.
How, how much is debt and how much is giveaway?
Well, I think Jorge's, Jorge's estimate, if Tina Jaeger was on here, we could ask her. But I think Jorge's estimate between one point eight and two million was, was in the ballpark. And I can try to find out for you.
And that's what we have left to give away for economic development?
Yes.
Well, I don't know that you want to give it away, but.
That's a pretty small amount, I would think. They're talking about twenty million on Water Street. Seems like one or two million for economic development is peanuts.
Well, they're, they're, they're different funds though, right? Ones Cara.
Well, they're different funds, but their amounts.
Borrowing a hundred thousand from it is, and to pay back when things pick up is what that program kind of is, is for loaning, but.
I, I'm wondering what we, what we need with economic development. What are we looking for? Industry? Or grocery stores or what?
It, it depends, Counselor Olson. It depends. We get a lot of leads from the state and there's other, like, for example, stack that just came to the city to ask for a loan. It depends on what project we work with. And also is the other part is retention that our staff works with. But basically the money has been lent out to different projects and we expect to get those dollars back.
Yeah, that's all well and good, but we don't, the Pepsi money is essentially all gone. And what else do we have?
And that is the, what we usually call the Pepsi money. We just call it Economic Development Opportunity Fund now.
I know you do, but it's really Pepsi money.
So, so what is the, what is the, why is it we can't borrow, loan some of that money to TLT? They can pay it back over time for people that are working for the city, on the city's behalf? You know, a hundred thousand or whatever that number is. I mean, if they're going to pay it back as TLT improves, we're getting it back faster than we would get it back from the stack or whomever this, we're going to loan money to. I don't want to cut anybody's staff, anybody's staff. The city's going through it right now and I know that and we all understand that. But the future, we all need also, you know, yes, it may be a small amount of money. That small amount of money might be a businessman who wants to bring his business here. You know, so if we keep, keep them in place, at least in a better situation you are now, by loaning the money, they can pay it back with, with, as TLT funds increase. And these, those people will be working on our behalf, the city's behalf, to get people to come here and bring their dollars here. And so I'm, I'm struggling with, let's just eliminate everybody. I don't want to cut anybody. But if we could keep them at least working on our behalf to bring people to this city as things start to improve, TLT money will follow. And that's, that, that's my whole goal.
We don't want to pay payroll with TLT money.
We're not talking about paying, well, this is keep the city, the city's people that get people here.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor. I don't show up, so I'm buttting in.
No, I'm looking at you right here. I see you over there.
Yep. I can hardly see you, Dick, but yeah. Mike and then Bill?
Here's my concern. My concern is that if we take these projects, these, these AVA and ADA, we'll just talk about those. If we take those folks down to just about nothing, there's no guarantee that they'll stay. And plus, we don't have an advertising arm anymore for the city.
That's right.
They perform a very, they're advertising. So the one thing you don't want to do in business is when you're in trouble is cut your advertising. And they're an advertising arm or a marketing arm for the city of Albany to get people to come here. And I kind of go with Alex that and, and Chair, and Mayor said it too. We got two million dollars. Ten percent of that's two hundred thousand. And we can't part with five percent, which would be a hundred thousand dollars on a, on a, on a loan for a period of time to TLT, because it, the, the economy's going to come back. It's not going to be dead forever. It's going to come back and we have to play our cards how we've got them and, and so that we can keep these programs going. That's where I'm at.
Okay, all right. Bill?
Well said, Mike. In fact, you took all of my talking points, so. Yeah, I, the city's not advertising and ADA and AVA does that for us and we've been willing to pay them for that. But I'm trying to think outside of the box here a little bit, because I don't, I don't like the city's solution and I don't like TLT's solution, so. Before somebody shoots it down and says, you know, can't do that, you know, I'm the kind of guy, tell me I can't do it and then get out of the way.
Exactly.
So here's my suggestion, Peter. I'd like to figure out a way to extend some funding to TLT and ADA for the next ninety days, the first quarter. And then revisit this situation and see where we're at. I, I think that if we're going to, if the country and the city and the state's going to start on this path of recovery, I think it's going to happen pretty quickly. And it might, it could be that this is the key time to, to maintain your advertising arm of the city, which is what these folks are. Now, in ninety days, we can revisit the situation. I think we've got to be a little bit fluid and a little bit flexible in these times to be able to adjust quickly. to be able to adjust quickly. I don't think we need to pull 100 grand out of the Pepsi money, as I call it, and commit for the entire year. If, as others have said tonight, things start to turn around and the TLT money increases, the issue will tend to solve itself.
So this is, I'm going to share what happened with my business. Everyone's, every insurance agent in the city was, is freaking out about not being able to go see their clients and not making any money. I've, I changed my paradigm and I have made more money in the last two months in insurance than any agent probably in this area that sells what I sell. And because I was able to be flexible, I spent more money on advertising in certain areas. And I think if we cut our marketing arm to almost nothing, a shell, a shell, and when things do turn around, we won't be able to respond fast enough to get the city out there again. So I think keeping, keeping, keeping marketing, our marketing arm, at least maybe not fully well, but at least healthy enough that they can recover, I think it makes sense. And I threw 100,000 out there because American Open Hour went back and forth after thinking about the number earlier in the call, but I like Counselor Coburn's perspective saying, let's look at it quarterly or the next, you know, the next three months and see what makes sense. And if the second quarter we do pick up, we pay the money back, the TLT will pay the money back and then we'll just move on as normal. So I don't want to cut staff. I think the work that Sophie and Seth do is valuable to the city. But I also think the work that the agencies do for the city on the city's behalf is really important as well. And so if we can find a way to look at this on a quarterly basis, Counselor Coburn, I think that's fantastic. I think it'd be, it'd be beneficial to the city long term.
So if you take the 100,000, if it was like a year, then you're a little over, you know, close to 9,000 a month. What about taking 27,000, 75% AVA, 25% ADA, and then for July, August, September, have that spread out over July, August, September? And then we revisit to see what the numbers look like when it comes to September? Is that kind of what you were thinking, Bill?
Yeah, I don't know if those are the exact numbers and staff can crunch that and come back to us with, but I think you're on the right track.
Okay, do you want staff for Wednesday night then to kind of look at that for a three month type program out of the Economic Opportunity Fund and bring that back on Wednesday?
I would like to.
Well, I think it'd be consensus from, from council tonight before we proceed forward. I mean, this is just my, my comments and my contribution, so.
Okay, do you want to have a motion to direct staff?
And before you, and before you make that motion, remember that when Jorge created this balanced document, he tried to spread the pain out as evenly as he could. So right now, we're, we're looking at reductions in our own economic development staff. And the question is, do you want to restore ADA and AVA before you restore our economic development staff? Even as we do not have a membership in AMDEC anymore?
Well, I would like to know what it, how we can make this part of it, right? Have the economic staff as part of it. Not, not just AVA and, and ADA, but what, what would make sense if we were to do a, this three month program? How can we restore our staff and both those programs?
I agree with it.
For both of it would be for tourism component, the economic development component. What it would be for borrowing off of the Economic Opportunity Fund for that three months, how much, how much would we end up?
Will it make sense? Will it make sense?
At the same ratio, you're, are you saying at the same, I probably need to clear some clarification there. As a council or directing staff to take the 100,000 and distribute it for the first three months, the first quarter, based on the same ratio that we have outlined in the recommendation that we sent it to you. Also, I wanted to come back and remind the council, we only have $230,000 that we're forecasting for the entire year for all those line items. This used to be a one point, almost 1.1 million dollar budget. So if we allocated fully fund all the items for the first three months, we might have, we might not have enough money to fund the rest.
Well, no, that wasn't part of the, of that discussion, but Bessie's next. Bessie talk.
No, I, I didn't ask to speak, but I could, I could go along with checking it out in, you know, in three months or something. I think all cogs of the wheel are important, but, I don't know, it's, it's just a difficult time right now and, and it's going to hurt no matter what we do.
Right. Bill?
Jorge, to answer your question, I think that the TLT, maybe with the staff's input, has prioritized where they think the, the money should be spent. And I didn't hear too many rumblings on any of the issues with the exception of the Veterans Day Parade and it sounds like there's some other issues involved in that. So I don't think we're talking 100,000. You have to pull up the spreadsheet again.
Can you pull it up, Matt?
To see what the cost was for ADA, AVA, and then our own internal economic development. I mean, was that $33,000 a month?
No, well, I'll have Matt put it up, but I can give you, we're, we're forecasting 130,752 for the year. That's $10,000 or $10,896 a month for AVA.
So short course, for clarification, the 100,000 was, it was a number I threw out there as a, as a round number. It may not be the actual number, but staff can come back. I'm not asking, I will just have to come back with a number that makes sense for restore staff, AVA, TLT, excuse me, ADA and AVA. And then what that, was that look like for the next three months? You know, so if we pull up 34,000 and, and fix that for the next three months and then revisit that, and it makes sense to do it again because money's coming in, then we make sure that we capture that money back into the fund. I think it makes a lot of sense.
So what I'm looking at right now on screen, wages and salaries are $36,700. Isn't that for the year, Jorge?
Yes, and that's the TLT recommendation. Matt, if you could pull out the, the next one after MS, MS, that one that has an A at the end. The next one. That's the one that we modify, we, this is original recommendation for, from the economic development portion of it. And that's $40,000 for 25% of both Seth and Sophie for the year.
Well, I was, I was grabbing my calculator and didn't catch every word you said, but. I mean, based on that previous slide, the, the monthly amount on the wages and salaries would be three grand. And I think that you'd have to crunch the numbers. That's why, you know, give you time to crunch these numbers and come back Wednesday night. But like Alex said, if we prioritize ADA, AVA and, and our internal economic development and what's the, the cost to fully fund those for the next three months?
Yeah, if you look, if you look at the last column there that talks of, that has the percent of FY20 by any budget. If you, if I'm hearing correctly, you're, you're recommending that we take 100,000 and make the distribution based on those numbers that we have there, like for example.
No.
You have to crunch the numbers. It's not 100 grand. I mean, Sharon said 27,000, but.
I just ran, I just said 100,000 as a round number, right? So what we, and what I would like to know is if you go back and say, how do we do these, what we want to do or at least attempt to do for the next three months? It doesn't have to be 100. It could be 35. But if we can do something like that and it makes sense, we can borrow the money and TLT can pay it back as things improve. If it doesn't improve, then we can shut the money off or we'll figure that out when we get to that three month period. So 100,000 drop that. Let's just look at the three months and what it's going to take to make this happen. That makes sense?
Jorge, in.
I'm not following the, the, the funding piece of it. This provides, let me just try to explain and then we can probably go from there. What this provides is a distribution based on the number that says 230,000 that we have. And this is for the entire year. We only have 230,000 to distribute for the entire year. And I, I just would like more clarification in terms of the three months where we're talking about three months funding. Is the three months funding to fund based on the 230,000 or? I see Counselor Alex Johnson.
What I'm saying is, is that if you, what can we take from, if we borrow money from the Economic Opportunity Fund? Right? And look at it instead of a whole year, let's just look at three months. All right, and then TLT will pay that money back once things start to improve. Instead of taking 100,000, what is it going to take to restore staff and the AVA and ADA? The 100,000 has nothing to do with this. This is just what number would make sense for the next three months to fund.
Oh, that's okay.
See what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah. So basically what we budget for them was the column where the, where it says your FY20, 21 planned budget. That's what the number that was budget for them. That, it's something that they will have to let us know how much it would require from them to restore staff. I can tell you that for us to restore staff in the city would be 73,500 for the year. So if we divide that by the month, then we can get three months out of that.
Correct.
So that would be 6,125 times three. We would need 18,375. And what I'm saying is, if we spend that 18,375 and the economy doesn't pick up as fast as we're predicting, we're just 850% of our budget in three months.
We'd be backfilling it from the Economic Opportunity Fund. Borrowing off that. So Bill, did you still have something?
Well, yeah, I, if I'm looking at the spreadsheet that's in the packet, it looks like the city's proposal that we heard two weeks ago. Just to back up a little bit, the first time we heard about this was a month ago. And I said, well, I think we ought to hear from the TLT committee. And then two weeks ago, we said, okay, we talked to the TLT committee and, you know, here's our recommendation. I said, well, yeah, but the TLT didn't agree with it. So we agreed to hear, you know, give TLT time to meet and give us some input. Now, that's the background. I'm looking at the spreadsheet that's in our packet and it looks like the city proposal was to cut city salary and benefits by 45%. So if we do nothing and move forward, you, you were going to cut staff by 45% already. Isn't that correct?
Correct.
That is correct because we didn't, we only have 230,000 to distribute.
Can I say something here?
Yep, go ahead.
Let's get off of the budget for right now and what we have to distribute. Those are, those are projections. What we're trying to do, I believe, is, is backfill to keep them going.
Right.
And let's move off of this budget for a minute. What we're saying is, is what is it going to take for the next, what Bill said is what is it going to take for the next three months to keep Seth, Sophie,
Sophie.
ADA and ADA going for the next three months without laying off any individuals? So the budget, the budget really doesn't matter at that point because what they're, we're talking about is backfilling through the Economic Development Fund until TLT comes back. We're moving money around. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. The only thing I want to caution is that we might not have enough money to continue through the year. But I understand what the council is asking, is asking to backfill the next three months with keeping Seth and Sophie and the AVA and ADA fully funded for the next three months.
Yep.
Yes.
And we'll provide that number, what that looks like.
Fully funded, it was to keep their staff going.
That's correct. Yeah, so we'll need some information. We'll, we'll, we'll consult with both ADA and AVA to see how much that would be. I know we provided the number in terms of wages and salary, what the city staff, it's required.
All right, Rich?
There's a big difference between keeping somebody alive, keeping them, you know, and fulfilling all their wants. I, I think this needs to go back to staff and say, let's inject some money from a loan to keep Seth and Sophie and keep ADA and ADA staff funded, not, not all their expenses, because frankly, you know, even, even the TLT has some folks on it that used to be part of AVA, ADA. We have a couple of counselors who have, well, one, one owns the building and another one owns the, or is, is on the board. So, you know, we're, I think we're not in a position to make a good decision the way we're going to put it here. If we agree, okay, let's take, go back to AVA, ADA, what do you need to survive? What does economic development need to survive? Let's not, let's not dig a hole in another budget. Okay, we're going to make a loan from economic development that, that will be paid back. How big does that need to be? Well, we need to figure that out. Because I don't think the, the group that's assembled here right now can make a good decision on how to just move at this moment. Staff needs to do that.
Okay, so Jorge, do you want to kind of bring us back what those three month numbers would be? Where it's going to be backfilling from the Economic Opportunity Fund?
Yes, I'll bring those back. I'll have to, we'll work real quickly with both AVA and ADA to get their portion of it. We already have our staff portion of it. And then we'll just come back to the council on Wednesday, let council know how much dollars from the Opportunity Development Fund are required as a loan to backfill these next.
Perfect.
Okay, is council okay with that direction?
I'm comfortable with that.
Right, okay. All right, I think we got some direction on that for the TLT revenue and, and let's see, I lost my agenda on my one iPad, so. Think so, yep. Peter?
Thanks for the opportunity. I have nothing to add.
Okay, council, let's see, start with the top of my screen, Mike?
No, I have nothing.
All right, and Bill?
I'd be curious to know what the plan is for Cool Pool. Maybe a staff, quick staff report Wednesday night. Just of when it can open and so forth.
What's Cool Pool?
Things seem to change daily, so, you know.
That's by sunrise or just below the overpass.
Okay, okay.
Or outdoor pool. Okay, Bessie?
Well, just a couple of things. First of all, I want to tell Lisa that the flowers downtown look beautiful. They're really, came at a good time when I think we needed some brightening in our lives. And just kind of a, a report here, talk about things that are just not going. We don't know about the Veterans Parade or whatever, but I've got my TV on mute and stuff and they just said that the Pendleton Roundup is canceled too. So, you know, it's just terrible times we're in right now. What we're going to do, so. All I can say is see y'all Wednesday.
Okay, all right, Rich?
Yeah, I'd just like to have maybe an email to us. You said it's not made public yet about the Veterans Day Parade. Those things that you can tell us and an email.
I agree.
I'm on the board for that association, so I can talk with Patty and get something else.
Well.
Patty's doing up a letter, so I think she's trying to contact their partners and stuff first before they did a news release. So.
I'm not asking, I'm asking for it to come to us personally, not blast it out over the internet.
Okay, all right, Alex?
Well, today's my 55th birthday. I'm happy to be here and.
Happy birthday.
Yeah.
Do we need to?
I'm not saying, no, please don't say, don't do that. But it was, I, I was actually good. I enjoyed the meeting today and I'm happy to see everybody's safe and have a good evening.
You too. Yep, Dick?
Yes, I'm wondering if anybody knows what's hap- Yes, I'm wondering if anybody knows what's happening with A T I. We saw that they had major layoffs there. Can anybody tell me why and what's going on there?
Well, they sent the letter out, and it said that they were still, they would be shutting down or laying off in September, so I'm presuming that their orders, they probably got orders to work on till September. There's a lot of metal industry is really impacted because of the airlines cutting back, so it is hurting our metals industry big time, so. You know, we used to be really more diversified with our economy when we had the paper mill. We used to have other mills plus our metals, and now we have a lot of metals industry, and so our economy really relies on those jobs. So hopefully, they'll get some orders coming in here this summer so they can continue operations, but.
Well, the metal industry.
Hundred and thirty some.
The industry by itself is down at least half. Being one of them. I think they're talking a hundred and thirty people.
Yep.
Some of them have already been laid off. Well, they didn't have that many more when the when they had the lockout. Back when, they started at two hundred plus, and then the lockout happened, and they came back with a hundred and seventy or eighty. And then down to almost nothing, and then went back up. And it's, I mean, without airplanes flying, they don't need parts. They're because of their, the amount of money that they're not bringing in, they're losing their shirt. There are literally tens of thousands of aircraft parked. And, you know, you have your aircraft parked. You don't need to worry about bearing housings in a Pratt, Pratt and Whitney engine. So that's where we're at.
Yeah. Pretty scary.
So is it probably Boeing's screw up with the other seven thirty-seven Max or whatever it is?
No.
It's all the viral.
No, Dick, it's just no, no people are flying to speak of. And so the aircraft are parked. And if they're parked, they're not being used, they're not being, things are not wearing out. And so they're not ordering new ones. It's just spiral.
So they're not making titanium someplace other than here, just no market for titanium. Is that right?
No market for the parts, yeah. And that eventually it gets back to titanium.
Yeah. I know. Anything else, Dick?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, and I didn't have anything this evening. And staff have anything else? Oh, we will see everybody on Wednesday night, and with that, we're adjourned, folks.